Mr. Fries, you, are you good? I'd like to call to the order, um, the monthly school board meeting of the Miami'sburg City Schools dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is tonight's roll call. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Amsler.
Here.
Mr. Daffler.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mrs. Neese.
Here.
Mr. Toadvine.
Present.
Dr. Blessing.
Present.
I am present. Mr. Homan.
Here.
Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, uh, for March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion for tonight's agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Neese and second by Mr. Lewis. Any questions or comments in tonight's agenda? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler.
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine.
Yes.
Mr. Amsler.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is tonight's, uh, or approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the regular board meeting held February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two. May I have a motion for those minutes, please?
I'll move for the approval of the minutes from February seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Lewis. It seems to be seconded by Mr. Toadvine, correct? Any questions in regards to, uh, last month's meeting minutes? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Toadvine.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese.
Yes.
Mr. Amsler.
Yes.
Mr. Daffler.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Next on the agenda is approval of the financial report, February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, may I have, uh, a motion for the financial report dated February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two?
I move for the approval of financial report dated February twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion by Mr. Daffler.
I second it.
Second by Mrs. Neese.
Yeah, I will, um, go over the, um, dashboard report. Um, so if we could pull up, this would be starting on page four. So really what I wanted to draw your attention to, um, is in the green, it, it shows that there's a projected, um, revenue collection that indicate a one point five million dollar, collection in addition to what I forecasted. I, I did want to go in and explain what this number is, so i- if, if you remember us talking about the fair school funding plan and how the district is going to be receiving less money, um, overall, um, over the next several years. Um, when we look at that one point five million dollars, what is happening is the analytics and the software is predicting what the future will be by using the last seven years. And so obviously that number is going to be higher because the analytics think that those numbers are going to continue the way that they had. Um, that's not going to be the case. Um, so I went ahead and left that number there. Um, but, but truly, um, we, uh, are much more dialed in than that one point five million dollars. Um, if you look at the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven fifty-five, that's, um, point zero two percent, um, within the forecast, so it's pretty close. I did just want to bring up those, those two numbers that you looked, as you look through this. Uh, we have now caught up with our collections from the county auditor through the advances, um, and we're actually doing a little bit better, um, than we were this time last year. But those are the two main things that I wanted to point out in the financial report. Are there any questions?
I do not. Anybody have any questions?
I just like your graphics. They're awesome. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Hearing none of the comments. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Amsler.
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine.
Yes.
Mr. Daffler.
Yes.
Mrs. Neese.
Yes.
Uh, next we come to the recognition of citizens, staff, and students. So we start off tonight's meeting with, uh, Ms. Allison Fries from Miami'sburg High School. Can we come on down? Come on down.
Okay. The Miami'sburg February District Student of the Month is Allison Fries. Allison was nominated by our Miami'sburg High School teacher, Bethany Bules, who said, "I have had the pleasure of being Ally's French teacher for two consecutive years. Ally consistently demonstrates all aspects of Berg behavior. She is responsible, uphold, upholds expectations, respects others, and gets involved. Ally meets all deadlines for assignments and does exceptional work. I know that I can always count on Ally to go above and beyond what's expected. She is engaged in class discussions and works very well on her own or with her peers. Ally leads by example through her kindness, positivity, and dedication to academics. Ally shows a genuine interest in the French language and culture. She is always quick to share an answer or ask a question about something that intrigues her. Ally Fries has a very bright future, and I am honored to be her teacher. Ally's other teachers also have wonderful things to say about her." From Mr. Petroff. Ally is an example of a student who meets all of our Berg behavior expectations daily. Ally is responsible and keeps up with her academic work daily, is respectful of others, and is always positive and active in her education. Ms. James says Ally is a very hard worker and dedicated student that always puts forth her best effort. Mrs. Curry says Ally is kind, conscientious, and invested in her learning. She sets a great example for others to follow. And Mrs. Wagner Harris has, um, said, uh, "I am very, I am just getting to know Ally this semester, but I'm already impressed. She is thoughtful and responsible, a delight to have in class, and I'm excited to see what she comes up with and to work with her in crafts this term." Ally, I apologize. I tried to learn how to say congratulations in French today. I can't do it. But congratulations, Allison Fries, February District Student of the Month.
Good afternoon, Board of Education. If you want to present your business medallion, and any special visitors you brought on this evening?
Um, I have my mom, my grandparents, and my father and, um,
Are hiding out at the, yeah. Well, congratulations. Any, um, future plan ideas yet?
Um, I'm not sure. Just go to college.
Okay, did you have a final four pick in the basketball tournament coming up?
Um, Arizona winning, so hopefully.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any pictures you want to get? I mean, we're going to get a picture for social media here. Your family's welcome to come up as well. Get a picture. Oh, they're going to come out. Behind, the Oz is coming out from behind.
There he is. Hold away the curtain.
Congratulations again.
Congratulations. Do you have to say for the whole meeting?
Ally, I want to congratulate you on inheriting most of your mother's character. I'll do it. What do you do?
That's fine. Next on the agenda is Medler View's Elementary School Presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To our board members along with central office, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity tonight to showcase students, and we can't forget staff at Medler View. I am Susan Woods, the principal at Medler View, and I am excited tonight to summarize for you our year-long journey implementing the emotions check-in. I have some guests with me this evening on this journey. We have Clarissa Wolferson, Colleen Breen, both social and emotional learning consultants with Montgomery County Educational Service Center and Miami'sburg City School and Point Join Hall. She is a counselor both at Bayer and at Medler View. Before we begin the journey, I think it's important that, um, we answer the question, what is an emotional check, uh, check-in? Simply stated, very simply stated, um, it's a practice that districts, buildings can use, um, and Medler View obviously, uh, specifically for this evening. We can gather quick information. We can get to know students, and in that moment that we're checking in, if we need some immediate initial supports for students, it provides us that opportunity. So without further delay, let's start the journey. The, the journey is broken out actually into four parts, and they're the four quarters of the school year. The first quarter had three parts, and it was a reflection in resources. We needed as a staff and then specifically as our PBIS teacher-based team, we needed to reflect on where were we at the close of our two thousand and twenty-one school year? In full disclosure, we did not have a consistent check-in process or practice going on across the building, and as a result, we didn't have any common language that we could use with students. From there, we needed to tap some resources. So at the time, it was Clarissa O'Light, because she was our own VSEL consultant, and when we asked, "Would you help us with this journey? Would you help our building unite for the cause of kids and come in with a check, or help us develop a check-in process?" And I am sure that she had her sleeves rolled up before she even sat down at the table to help us. Second component, first quarter, was the learning. As a faculty and staff, we needed to gain information on the check-in process. To hit some highlights of PD and to highlight for us the benefits of the student check-in. Clarissa? Jody's going to hand out a component of our learning, um, also given to students, and you'll hear in just a bit, it's also given to parents.
Apparently, I'm really tall, so this has got to come up a little bit. Good evening, board. Um, so we definitely started with, uh, the staff at Medler View. We talked specifically about, um, understanding our upstairs and our downstairs brain and how, how that actually affects students. And pull it further. Okay. I don't like microphones, sorry. Um, so we talked about the fact that in these, uh, days and times, um, our children's brains have developed a little bit differently than how they've done in the past. The fact that their upstairs brain, which is where their prefrontal cortex is, and the fact that that's where all their decision-making is done, that is a little bit underdeveloped these days. There's some research out there showing that that has kind of shrunk in some ways because of COVID and being home away from school. And their amygdala, which is in their downstairs brain, where it houses their emotions and their fight-flight-freeze responses have actually, it's actually grown. So they're actually functioning a lot more in their downstairs brain than their upstairs brain. So we shared that with the staff, gave them a good, solid foundation, and we explained to them that teaching the kids about this would also support them in, in understanding that they're not bad kids. They only are using a different part of their brain, and we're trying to reteach them how to use their upstairs brain. So, um, we did that, and then we took that to the kids, and we'll talk about that in just a little bit. But it really comes down to the foundational piece of this is the beginning of self-awareness, self-regulation, and positive problem-solving skills. Oh, the benefits of check-in. Yeah, I might want to do that, too. So that's on the next slide. The benefits for kids and what we taught them and what we taught the teachers happen to be that, um, we could elevate their voice and stress that every voice matters in our school, that it is okay to say, "I'm not okay today." Um, it allows, uh, the teachers to actually build that positive relationships with students and also teaches students to build relationships with their peers. That this is a family, this is a community, and we support each other no matter how we're feeling. Um, definitely talking about gaining our awareness of our own emotions and how to regulate or understand that we need to co-regulate with somebody who supports us. So the staff is really encouraging that in the classroom, and then, um, we're of course talking about developing those problem-solving skills and working with the kids on what are your tools in your toolbox that you can use at school to help keep yourself calm and in your upstairs brain versus the downstairs brain, because we know when we hit the downstairs brain, our IQ actually drops twenty to thirty points. And that's when we get that fight-flight-freeze response where the kids go, you know, we ask them, "What were you thinking?" And they go, "Ooh." Just because they weren't. Their IQ actually drops. So we're teaching the kids about that, and it's, it's been really fun and really enlightening.
Last component of the first quarter was, um, collaboration and revision. We needed to come together again as that PBIS teacher-based team, look at the tools that were being used, two thousand and twenty-one revise so that it was something that could be utilized kindergarten, fifth, and for us as adults. Jody has the last handout. That's our final product. Um, it's the emotion check-in that we're using K-five in the building, and it's somewhat leveled. You'll, you'll see once you have in front of you the three tools. One for our pre-K, K-one students, basic language, second, third grade. We added some additional emotions and feelings so that again, they could begin to label those. And then four, five has even more of the emotions, feelings, et cetera, on it. Quarter two, started the teaching and learning. Three parts, so to speak, to that. We needed to continue the PD with staff. We held a parent academy. And then the student part of quarter two, teaching and learning, was the first in a three-part series where one of our SCL consultants actually went into every single classroom, and for the first lesson, I turned it over to Colleen, or I'm sorry, Clarissa. I know. Um, to give you kind of the looks-like and sounds-like of that lesson.
So I actually thought about bringing the experiment, but I was afraid that the vinegar would explode everywhere. I am known as the scientist when I walk into Medler View these days. Matter of fact, I was in a kindergarten classroom today. I had a few minutes before a meeting, and so I like to just pop in the classrooms every once in a while. This little kindergartner, I walked in, and he goes, "Hello, scientist." "I'm in my upstairs brain," and I'm like, "Yes." So, uh, they remember this. What we did is we took a, uh, and we did this with parents, too. Uh, we take a simple exploding bag experiment. So it's the, the baking soda wrapped in a paper towel, and we talk about our emotions and the fact that they change throughout the day. Um, and, you know, we might have a good moment in the morning, but then maybe we miss our bus, and then we get in trouble with mom because mom has to take it to the school. And then everything's kind of okay during the day, but then we go outside for recess, and somebody's mean to us and says something nasty to us on the playground, and then we go back inside, and lo and behold, we have a test. And we're looking at this test, and we don't know the answer to the question. And we talk about, as I drop that little packet of baking soda in there and zip up that Ziploc bag, that if we don't regulate and deal with our emotions, this is exactly what happens to us, and the, the bag actually expands to the point where it explodes. And we call that flipping our lids. So we talk to the kids about the fact that when they do that, it's that fight-flight-freeze, and they do or say something that they're going to have to say they're sorry for. Um, and so we just wanted to introduce that to parents and talk to them about how they can see their kids differently at home when they're flipping their lids. And we actually provided them with, um, soft-start bags to help their kids start to learn to regulate at home, especially during the holidays. This was what, in November? I think we did it right before Christmas break, so they were able to build, um, their soft-start bags to use at home so they can regulate whether they're on vacation or whether they're staying at home. So we did a lot with the parents with that, so the language just kind of got spread everywhere. And so that was the start of it, and then Colleen did part two and part three that you'll hear about later.
The, um, teaching and learning part of quarter two, there was also then, um, the actual implementation of the check-in that you have in front of you tonight. That was rolled out second quarter. And what you see here are just some pictures in the classroom. The check-in traditionally takes place for the first time during their soft-start in the morning. Quick summary of some of the pictures you see, um, far left where a teacher is standing, and she has a line. One of the teachers allows the student to bring the actual check-in that's been laminated to her every morning, and she has a thirty-second, maybe minute conversation, conversation with every student before the day even starts. Some of the, uh, classrooms far right, you can see that they have a poster size. Students come in, part of, uh, starting the day, part of that check-in. Um, they put their clothes pinned. It allows her a quick glance to see who she needs to revisit. Other two pictures show that it's part again of their soft-start. Students mark where they are so that the teachers can go around and do some quick checks. Next picture, the next slide, just gives that building-wide feel, meaning, um, the one picture on the left shows that we've got some of, uh, the check-in stations throughout the building. In the hallway, kids can with, at any given time as they're traveling throughout the day, if a student, um, feels or looks a little down and a, and a passing adult recognizes that, they can go to a check-in. We have a check-in in the office. That's what you see on the file cabinets. So if a student signs in late and Mrs. Wall recognizes, "Hmm, student seems a little dysregulated, maybe not in that upstairs brain," she'll pull him in, talk with him, and then there's a calming corner with the same check-in in my office. Quarter three, also teaching and learning. PD continued. I think it's important, and Colleen and, um, Clarissa, you brought this up. The PD's happening with every staff member, certificated, classified, so that again, we have that common language across the building. Second lesson, look and sound like. Colleen, good.
Good evening. Um, yeah, as Susan said, we started quarter three D with the PD for all staff. So this started in classrooms. Um, but this time we took it to our paraprofessionals as well, because this doesn't have to stay in the classroom. This common language, these check-ins can be used on the bus, at the playground, in the cafeteria. We know where those hotspots are. We know where those kiddos become the most dysregulated. And so we wanted those staff members to feel empowered to take this language out there with them and to apply it to the students so that the students were seeing it in those situations, too, and understanding that they could regulate, that they could flip their lids on the bus, in the cafeteria, on the playground, and they could regulate themselves. Um, so in our second lesson, we spent some time introducing the students to their neuroanatomy. We gave names to the upstairs, downstairs brain, prefrontal cortex, and amygdala, again, just empowering them to understand what's going on in their own bodies. Um, we talked about the amygdala as the body's alarm alert, so it triggers that fight-flight-or-freeze response, which is just that evolutionary response to protect us from a wild animal. Um, but we talked about the fact that that's not what the kids have to worry about now. They're worrying about tests and angry adults, and sometimes the brain is not able to differentiate between that wild animal and that math test. This is actually going to hurt them, but we have a similar fight-flight-or-freeze response. Um, so the goal with this first lesson was to talk about not just the emotions, but the sensations that we feel in the body. How does your body actually feel right now? So I'm going to give you guys just a second of that. Go ahead and take a deep breath in through your nose, out through your mouth, and just ask yourself, "How does my body feel right now? Is it warm or cold? Does it feel heavy? Does it feel light? Does it feel tingly, jittery? Does it feel calm and relaxed? Does it feel energized?" All of those sensations tell us how we're feeling, and when that amygdala goes off, it sets off that reaction in our bodies. So not just understanding our emotions, but being able to say that sometimes angry is going to feel like I'm going to throw that test, or I'm going to rip it up, or I want to hit somebody. But sometimes that angry is that freeze response where I'm going to sit here and stew, and I'm not going to say anything, and help the students to start to recognize what that feels like, because if they can recognize when it starts happening, then we can get to them and they can get to themselves before they flip their lid, before we have that temper tantrum, before we slug or shove that student in the hallway, before we've ripped our test in half. So starting to get them familiar with what that fight-flight-or-freeze response feels like in their body, um, so that they can, as they check in with their teachers, they cannot just say, "Hey, I'm feeling sad," but what does that sad feel like in my body? So that teacher has more ways of helping them.
Third quarter lessons aren't completely done, so I invite anyone that would like to come and observe a lesson. Um, we, Jody and I try to get into as many as we can, but we'd certainly welcome, just give me a call, send an email, and I can give you dates and times and such. Fourth quarter. Um, again, final lesson in a, in that series of three. Um, and so maybe should have just stayed up here. Because the look and sound like of the last, um, lesson, and none of these have started yet. So again, if you would like to come in, we've got the schedule already set. You are welcome to come into either the final third quarter or that fourth quarter.
So our third lesson is going to be all about practicing the various regulation strategies and how students can use them to counter the effects of that fight-flight-and-freeze response. Um, we're going to begin to identify with the students what kind of sensory regulation they like. Some of us like pressure to regulate. Some of us need movement to regulate. Some of us need breath and silence. Some of us like olfactory input. We like the smells of things. How many of you put on lotion and then just take a deep breath and go, "Oh, everything's okay in my world right now." So helping the students figure out what works for them, because not every regulation strategy is going to work for every student. And again, empowering them to have the tools that they need to be able to choose their regulation strategies and either self-regulate or co-regulate if they haven't reached, reached that point. Um, my experiment doesn't explode, so if you guys don't mind humoring me, we will go ahead and I'll kind of just walk you through what we do, um, with our kiddos in the classroom to help them understand how this feels, as I tell them, you know, Susan doesn't let me bring in a wild tiger to us to get us all worked up and make us feel like we're going to fight-flight-or-freeze. Um, so if you guys are okay standing up for me for a second. Does anybody mind being my volunteer with my pulse oximeter? It doesn't bite, I promise. Katie, you're awesome. Okay. So go ahead and take a nice big breath, and everybody's feeling pretty calm and chill, right? So we talked about the sensations and what's happening right now in our body. All right, so Katie's heart rate's pretty chill, about sixty-eight. So we're going to go ahead and just march in place for about ten or fifteen seconds, just a taste, and I make the kids jog really fast. But go ahead and just march in place, get your body moving a little bit. We've been sitting for a long time anyway. And then what we do is we stop and then have a seat. So they have jogged in place, and then we would go ahead and do our pulse ox again. Heart rate's going to be about the same. Theirs is significantly higher. And so we would talk about what does that mean? That's that fight-or-flight response. And then we practice our regulation strategies. I've already seen a few of you do this one throughout the course of the meeting. How many of you ever sit in a meeting with your hand on your chin, and you put your finger right here? You have a parasympathetic pressure point in that upper lip, and that's going to calm your body. We call this our magic mustache. So we tell the kids to take that finger, and you place it here, and we tend to do it in meetings because we need to take a breath and relax. And so that magic mustache, that parasympathetic pressure point, is going to calm us down and soothe all of that for us. Um, the other one we do is our buzzing bee breath. So go ahead and take a big breath in. And then as you exhale, buzz like a bee. So two different types of sensory input here. We have our kiddos who need pressure. And so they're gonna really respond to this one here. The buzzing bee breath, our students who need that sense of vibration and who need that hearing, um, that sensory input in their ears, they're gonna go ahead and respond to those. So that's what we'll be doing in that third lesson, empowering them to take those strategies with them.
For each of the classroom lessons, and again, I'm so, you'll hear it on the last slide, appreciative of our SCL consultants and the support that they have provided to Medlar and across our district. They created for every lesson, a teacher tip sheet that highlights some of the language from that lesson to repeat. And a parent flyer. Kids go home and they talk with their parent two or three points from the lesson. The parent can sign in return that their child did engage in conversation on this. They bring them all back and we do a drawing and we draw about fifty names out for some additional fidgets, little brains. With that said, appreciative, appreciative. Thank you very much for all that our SCL consultants do. That's kind of a public, I hope I thank you often when you're in our building. Um, I'm extremely proud of the students and staff at Medlar for embracing the concept and working hard to integrate it into the actual academic setting. And excited that we continue the journey into next year. And the last slide is a nice second grade celebration after one of your lessons. I don't know if you want to. Thank you. Any questions?
Mrs. Woods, you said parent academy? So you gave that to the parents of the students and how, if so, how was that perceived?
We did. We did it, uh, Clarissa was the individual who facilitated that. We did it early October-ish, November. We maybe had twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five. Um, we hope to do additional ones and see attendance increase. And I'm a strong believer that even if we had one, that's one parent equipped with the information to be consistent at home or equipped with some information and strategies to support their child outside of our, our classroom.
We had some really good aha moments. There's one video that I show, um, that shows a little boy in a kind of a, a, a situation where he's playing with toys with an adult. A dysregulated adult comes into the room and sits down. And then all of a sudden, that dysregulated adult starts yelling at the other adult because it's too loud in the room. And you can see just how the child's demeanor completely changes. And you should've seen the parents' faces. They're like, oh. Because that showed them that even with them being dysregulated, even if they're not yelling at their child, it affects their child at home. And so that was a big aha moment that came just from that little short two-minute video.
And great conversation with parents. They asked some, I think, on-point questions. And if nothing else, they got to see what we were doing, knowing that we're taking the social emotional needs of students very serious. Has been supportive. It's a kid child.
Thanks.
And again, thank you for your time. I know it ran a little longer, but I felt that it was worthy to celebrate, um, students, the staff, and again, the, the work of our Montgomery County Social Emotional Consultants.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, next we have the National School Library Month. It is recommended that the Board of Education recognize April as National School Library Month. The theme for National Library Week 2022, Connect With Your Library, promotes the idea that libraries are places to get connected to technology by using broadband, computers, and other resources. Libraries also offer opportunities to connect with the media, uh, programs, ideas, and classes in addition to books. Most importantly, libraries also connect communities to each other. Overall, the theme is an explicit call to action, an invitation for communities to join, visit, or advocate for their local libraries. Uh, first sponsored in nineteen fifty-eight, National Library Month is a national observance sponsored by the American Library Association and libraries across, uh, the country each April. It is a time to celebrate and contributes to our nation's libraries and librarians and to promote library use and support. It is recommended that the Board of Education expresses appreciation for our school media specialists and our media paraprofessionals who teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, provide literature, um, activities, support, classroom literacy, instruction and guide, and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. So, April, National School Library Month. Uh, next on the agenda is board discussion, um, community survey, and Ms. Katie Lucas.
Thank you. Um, so I wanted to, uh, let you all know and then also let our community know that as part of our strategic plan this year, our, um, Safety and Sense of Belonging Committee has been starting to collect some data so that we can have some information to start making goals for the improvement of safety and sense of belonging in the district as a whole. So we've already surveyed our staff, um, once this year and then we've surveyed this. We're in our third round of student surveys this year. So our next step, the next action step we had for our committee was to survey our community as a whole. So we have created, um, a survey around the topics of safety, sense of belonging, equity, um, and those, those, and climate, those sorts of, um, questions. And I did attach them to the agenda so you can see what the questions are. And what we're going to do is we're going to release this survey in April. And we're gonna give it a fair, a fairly decent amount of time from April four to April twenty-four, um, for parents and communities to answer, um, the survey for us. We've also talked to, um, My Misesburg City about connecting it, uh, connecting the link so that we can get a broader community, um, answers. So we're not, it's not just parents. We're looking for input from everyone in the community about our schools. Um, and we're going to use like our Facebook and our other social media, Instagram, Twitter, um, the board, the actual webpage, I'm sorry. Um, and we're gonna put it out there to everybody. So, um, as you're talking to people, once that releases, if you could please encourage them to answer, the more data that we receive, the better informed we are going to be about what our strengths are, um, and what areas we need to improve on. And then additionally to that plan is that once we get the data, we'll be looking at the data and analyzing all three sets of data and, um, getting that out to the community in a graphic. That's kind of our, our June project is to create a graphic for the community so they can see what the results of all of those surveys have been and, uh, what our plans are as well. And then hopefully, I mean, our hope is to continue this survey on a yearly basis so that we can, uh, measure how we're doing, um, and get input from the community on it. So I just wanted to put it out there and, um, we'll do our best to advertise it so, but if you guys will kind of talk to people in the community when it gets out there and ask them to fill it out for us, it'd be great.
I also talked to the township today and they're gonna put on their website as well.
And I think Brenda was gonna talk to the, uh, newspapers as well to see if we can get an article there too.
Any further questions? To Ms. Lucas or anybody else? Nope. Okay. We shall move on to consent agenda. Um, A is approval of overnight extended student trips. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the overnight extended student trips. Uh, this is for the varsity boys and girls track and field postseason. We also have the varsity boys, uh, tennis postseason, varsity baseball postseason, uh, varsity boys lacrosse post-season, and varsity girls lacrosse postseason. Chris, at the bottom of page four. Oh, I did. And varsity girls softball postseason. I was wondering why I kept doing all the boys and.
I'm just here to help.
I appreciate your help. Uh, B is the approval of out-of-state travel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve out-of-state travel. Uh, this is for the eighth grade Washington DC trip, um, which is scheduled for May tenth through May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. C is the approval of, uh, class of twenty twenty-two early graduates, My Misesburg High School. Michael Black, principal of My Misesburg High School, has recommended Sonia Ayers Romero, uh, Deontay, uh, Sisson for graduation pending satisfactory completion of all state and local requirements. Uh, D is the approval of seven thousand five hundred for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three teacher mini-grants. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the seventy-five-hundred-dollar mini-grant appropriation for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. This is a joint funding program between the Board of Education and the My Misesburg Schools Education Foundation Advisory Board. E is the approval of consent agendas A Alpha through D Delta. May I have a motion for those items?
I'll move for the approval of consent items A through D.
Uh, motion by Mr. Lewis.
I second.
Uh, second by Mr. Daffler. And if we go back for any type of discussions in regards to the postseason, which happens all the time, that should be no explanation there. Um, B, um, or C or D? Anybody have anything in regards to that?
I just wanna thank you for item B, increase to seventy-five-hundred dollars. You know, this is a, I think, grant program goes back many years and over years, some years back where, uh, we had a couple getting the participation of the teachers. And, uh, over time, seeing some of the projects that, that, uh, uh, the teachers came up with really responded a lot of interest. And so, uh, every year we, uh, have quite a challenge taking care of all the requests. So, uh, this is money you all spent and it, it goes really very, very well. So thank you. Yeah, we're happy to do our match.
I, Dale and yourself, Joe, would probably know more than I would. But I think when I got on the board eight years ago, I think the funding was at two thousand, maybe?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty, twenty-five hundred? I knew it was round two, so, yeah. Anything else in regards to early graduation or anything else? Nope. Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Next is the Human Resources Agenda Items. Uh, A is the approval of personnel reports certificated and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel reports. Employment in the My Misesburg City School District is contingent upon the content that submitting to and passing a BCII and FBI criminal record check in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code and pre-employment drug screening in accordance with the adopted board policies. Uh, B is the approval of personnel reports supplemental, stipend, certificated, and classified. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following personnel report, supplemental, stipend, and certificated and classified. Uh, C is the approval in administrative code, uh, renewals. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following administrative contract renewals. And D is approval of Human Resources A through C, so A Alpha through C Charlie. May I have a motion for those items, please?
I move to approve Human Resources Items A through C.
Motion by Mrs. Neese?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Um, Mr. Homan?
Um, regular hiring going on, also in the classified, um, we've been working, um, Mr. Board has asked us to look at for classified sub rates to get those in par with other districts, um, around us in order for us to maintain and to attract, um, subs around us. So, um, those are on there as well. And then, um, always in March are approval of administrative contracts. And then next month in April will be the teacher contracts as well coming up for that.
Okay. Any questions in regards to any of those items? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Amsler?
I have to abstain.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
I abstain.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is agreements and contracts. It is, it is the recommendation of the superintendent and the treasurer CFO that the Board approve an agreement with Forward Edge Incorporated. May I have a motion for this item, please?
I move for the approval of the agreement with Forward Edge Incorporated.
Motion by Mr. Toadvine?
I second.
Uh, Mr. Daffler, seconds. Does this go to you or Mr. Homan?
For, this is another technology purchase, um, as part of our ongoing. Um, I don't believe this is for our Chromebooks. I think this is just for, um, summer, uh, refresh of some of our technology equipment, whether it be a computer lab or, um, some projectors, different things. Nothing out of the ordinary in terms of, uh, just our, updating our current technology.
Yeah, it's specifically to our networking. Uh, the reason we're bringing it to you is because it's in addition to, or it's above the twenty-five-thousand-dollar uh, amount for us to be able to approve on our own.
Good. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
And Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Five is the financial agenda items. A is the authorization for amendment to the appropriate and certificate of estimated resources. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO that the appropriations and certificate of estimated resources be amended as listed in the attached reports. B is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates and authorizing the necess, necess, necessary, necessar- necessary tax levies for the tax year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. It is recommended by the treasurer CFO and superintendent that the Board of Education accept the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for tax year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented. C is the approval of the financial items A and B. May I have a motion for items A and B?
I move for the appro, approval of financial items A and B.
Motion by Mr. Daffler and I will second. Uh, Mr. Espy?
Yeah, just have a quick financial update that I wanted to give you. Um, um, this, a lot of this is gonna be reiterating what we discussed last, um, last board meeting. But I did wanna, uh, alert you to the, uh, five-year forecast and the, um, uh, the green is our cash balance as we go through fiscal year twenty-six. The orange is our expenses and the blue our revenues. As we talked about, um, we're projected to have a- As we talked about, we're projected to have a declining enrollment through fiscal year twenty-six with the Esser Funds that we've used primarily for salaries and benefits being expended in the fiscal year twenty-three. And then you'll notice that's when the orange starts to really overtake our blue in fiscal year twenty-four. This is where we're heading currently with the, the straight line basically going into fiscal caution that would happen in fiscal year twenty-four. The red is fiscal emergency, which would be sometime towards the end of fiscal year twenty-four into fiscal year twenty-five. So I just wanted to alert you that that's kind of where we're heading with our current expenditures. This is again a reiteration of the cost per pupil. And I think that the interesting thing is if you look at the tan, we're spending eleven thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars per pupil in fiscal year twenty-two. And the blue line is essentially the base cost that is new to the Fair School Funding Plan that has been implemented for this fiscal year. And you see the nine thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, that is basically what the state is saying is our base or the bare minimum per student that we would need to, to educate our students. You know, in a perfect world, the, the local taxpayers would only have to make up the red dash. But unfortunately, the state is giving us the green, which is three thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars, and the local taxpayers are having to make up the, the yellow dash. And you can see going along that same theme of, of the expiring Esser Funds that, that expire and that we completely use up in fiscal year twenty-three. In fiscal year twenty-four, our per pupil spending goes to thirteen thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars. So it does go up a market amount there and then continues to go up, just like our forecast is showing. Something that I think is interesting to note is if you look at our, the cost per pupil in our county, we're the fourth lowest. So, you know, we're essentially spending the, the fourth lowest amount per, per pupil in the county. And I think this, this is interesting to look at, especially as you see some of the higher above average spenders within our county that we're doing pretty well in terms of maintaining the costs. And even when you go back and look at what could happen in fiscal year twenty-two when we go to that thirteen thousand one eighty-six, it's still below the average that's been established in this graph right here. So as we go forward, we do have some existing levy renewals that are on the horizon for the district. We have the emergency and the substitute levy. It's going to be suggested that we combine those into a permanent status in November of twenty-two, which will actually be fiscal year twenty-three. And we anticipate bringing a resolution to the Board in April or May of this year, ahead of the August filing deadline. So that is kind of what to expect in the future. As we look, the, the really the necessity for this is the, is the reliance on property tax revenue. If you look at this graph, the far right is fiscal year twenty-three, far left is fiscal year twenty seventeen. You can see that the blue is by far the lion's share of the revenue for the district, which represents property taxes. So that, you know, it's, it's by far the most, the largest category of our revenue. This is an interesting graph where, again, you can look at every county district here, it's, it's rather busy, but you can see the red arrow pointing to us, where we are projected to be based off of the November forecast. You can see that there's no district in our county that is not expected to at least be in caution. And you see the lower two, that's a City of Dayton and Northmont, city schools that are, that are quite, quite below the coloration right there. Some, I think some interesting news too, that we were able to put together is looking at the Performance Index. And so the state measures a performance index of every student, and it, and it looks to see whether or not they're proficient. And there are several items that go into this. And without getting too technical, I'll just kind of give you these that, that go into the state report card, which are the achievement, progress, graduation rate, gap closing, improving at-risk K-three readers, and then prepared for success. As you look at pre-pandemic, so this is twenty nineteen, if you look at our performance index, the average in the county was eighty-two point five nine. And you can see that Miami'sburg is, is above average and right around the middle of the pack within the county in terms of the performance index. When we look at twenty twenty-one, that this actually just came out in November, you can see that the average actually dropped to seventy point eight one in the county. But Miami'sburg actually is further above average in twenty-one, so I think that that's important to, to note that during a pandemic and having to adapt and, you know, adapt to literally daily changes that the district was able to, to do better. When you stack up these two graphs next to each other, you can see markedly how the yellow drops and essentially the blue bar for Miami'sburg, you know, drops a miniscule amount, so I think that that's important to note. This graph is a little bit interesting. If you look at the, the Y-axis, it's actually the Performance Index, and then the X-axis is the expenditures per pupil or cost per pupil. And you can see that there's a pretty big distribution, and these districts that are found here are what ODE counts as our closest ten districts based on a multitude of different data points from the CUP report. When you look at us, where we are, only two districts in our ODE ten do better with less spending. So I think as you look at that, that's pretty interesting. If you remember back to last month, I, in the, in our top five ODE districts, North Olmsted was actually the one that was kind of off the charts that were kind of increasing the average a bit, they're actually the ones in the, in the bottom quadrant on the right. So, you know, essentially spending almost sixteen thousand dollars per student and you know, roughly ten points below us in the Performance Index, so I think that that's interesting. And obviously, this could also tell us like what is plain local doing, who is all the way in the far left and, and one of the highest scoring on the PI. So this can lead to, you know, kind of gleaning information from other districts as well. I also wanted to highlight the savings measures that we're currently doing here within the district. We were able to get a school bus grant, essentially allowing us to purchase four school buses for the price of two. Dr. Blessing wrote the Emergency Connectivity Grant that allowed us to bring seventeen hundred new Chromebooks into Miami'sburg City Schools at zero cost to the taxpayers. We're also evaluating, evaluating future contracts as we spoke about last month. There's a contract where we were able to save forty-three thousand over five years. And, you know, that's just the tip of the iceberg for what we can continue to do when we're looking at long-term contracts. We're capital planning, which allows us to make sure that we're planning for future capitalized expenditures out of the Permanent Improvement Fund. And what this allows us to do is be sure that we don't have to dip into the general fund should there be a catastrophic event within the district. And we're also continuing to evaluate staffing levels when a retirement or resignation occurs to see if we can continue to build efficiencies within the district. Finally, in terms of fiscal stewardship, the district is publishing all of our financials on Ohio Online Checkbook for community members to see, and we're doing this every month. So typically by the middle of the month, you should see the prior month posted on Ohio Online Checkbook. It actually breaks it down at every fund level, breaks it down to vendors, and you can, you can really slice and dice the data however you like. Also, just recently, Miami'sburg City Schools received the Auditor of State Award with Distinction, and only four percent of school districts in Ohio are awarded this. The district will also soon be closing on a bond refunding, where we're able to save two point five seven million dollars to the taxpayers of Miami'sburg, and we're also able to shave an entire year off the bond repayment. So that's some, some really good stuff going on in the district that I wanted to highlight.
Thanks, John. Any questions?
I just wondered if you'd had a chance to share those Performance Index graphs with the staff?
Not yet, but I'm actually going to be scheduling a couple different Zooms, where I'm gonna, they're gonna be optional for staff to join. And I plan to share it at that point.
Yeah, I think that would be a morale booster.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Six is the acceptance of donation. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the following list of donations. All monies will be used through each school's O-eighteen account unless indicated otherwise. Five hundred dollars from Mr. and Mrs. Foyawa to Jane Chance Elementary School for the purchase of books in Jane Chance's elementary that will diversify the student's selection. One thousand from the Miami'sburg Eagles RE twenty-three oh six to the Miami'sburg City School District for the implementation of the Preschool Promise MVCTC preschool classroom. May I have a motion for the acceptance of donations?
I move for the acceptance of donations.
Motion by Mr. Lewis and second by Mr. Toadvine. Again, thank you for all the donations. Any other comments or towards the donations? Hearing none, I have a roll call.
Mrs. Nice?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Daffler?
Yes.
Mr. Toadvine?
Yes.
Mr. Amsler?
Yes.
Next on the agenda is our very own Mr. Ozakovich from Miami Valley Career Technology Center.
Good evening. First off, I would like to thank Dr. Blessing for her coverage in the Viking Voice about MVCTC and what we're doing in our collaboration with Miami'sburg. It's always nice to get that out and about to the community to see what we're doing and what we're doing together, so thank you. One new thing, we're excited, we have a new position that will be created for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year is our Career Exploration Coordinator. And this position is a direct result of the most recent state budget bill. Career Technical Centers were provided funds to support K-twelve career awareness and exploration curriculum and activities to all districts, including charter schools in our Career Technical Planning District. And this is nice because we had a position like this over ten years ago, and unfortunately the funding went by the wayside, so we're excited to get this information out again to our districts. Also, construction, we're working with Gilbain Construction to determine the chronic impacts of COVID-nineteen on our timeline, along with the impact of shipments and raw materials and that. Basically, they've requested that we move the completion date from January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-four to August first of twenty twenty-four. We, I guess politely have been working very closely with them. And basically, the move in time does not impact the completion of our physical buildings. We're going to hold their feet to the fire on that. But rather, what it will do to include the site work, final grading, parking lot paving, landscaping, things like that. So we're going to be pretty close schedule-wise as far as the physical plant goes. Also, applications for the class of twenty twenty-four keep arriving. And as of now, we've received thirteen hundred and eighty-six applications compared to eleven hundred sixty-seven at this time last year. We're over two hundred greater than last year, which is awesome. Our National Technical Honor Society Ceremony will be held in the new MAC this year. And we have a hundred and sixty-seven students who've qualified to be accepted into the prestigious ranks of the NTHS. The event will be this Sunday, March twentieth at two PM. And I will be in attendance for that, and hopefully some of our teachers will be there at the request of our students. Also, our Student Recognition Ceremony will be held on Friday, May thirteenth at seven o'clock at the Wright State University's Nutter Center. And what we've done this year, rather than have that along with the staff, staff recognition ceremony, we're going to have the staff recognition in August eighth during the lunch hour. We did this the past year, and the staff really seemed to like having that separation. Also, very important, April ninth, the MVCTC Prom Midnight Masquerade will be at eight o'clock to eleven o'clock in our new MAC facility. Going along with what Mr. Espy indicated, we were looking at MVCTC valuation based on property values, it did go up one point two percent or ninety-three million, seven hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred dollars, which is all well and good. Our total valuation is seven billion, nine hundred twenty-six million, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. But when you look at it, with the, the valuation increasing, the effective property tax rate actually decreased. So it is what it is. Also, Miami Valley Career Technology Center, HOSA, future health professional students competed in regional contests in February with fifty-five students qualifying to compete at the state March twenty-fourth to twenty-fifth. And Ethan Betts, biomedical debate team contest winner, he is involved in biotechnology from Miami'sburg will be representing us along with our HOSA Board Representative, Ariana Roberts, she is also involved in the biotechnology program, and she is from Miami'sburg. MVCTC Senior Ava Knip, or Knip, from Miami'sburg is in our Veterinary Science Program. She was recognized this month, plans after graduation. She wants to go to Sinclair Community College with a major in psychology and a minor in business. And along with that, our veterinary science team placed second in the state equine management contest, and Ava was part of that team. That's good. Congratulations to the following students for their outstanding performance at the Ohio BPA contests. Top ten finalists, Jeremiah Bird, Computer Coding and Web Applications Junior from Miami'sburg. And also Alexander Jackson, Computer Networking and Cyber Security Junior from Miami'sburg. MVCTC Senior Marissa Bullock from Miami'sburg is in the Health Occupations Program. She was also recognized this month, plans after graduation. She is currently working at the Tapestry Senior Living in Springbrough. And she plans to attend Sinclair Community College and major in radio, radiologic technology. Wow. And finally, hot off the press today, we had MVCTC students qualified to compete at the Skills USA Ohio Competition on May third and fourth in Columbus in advertising design. uh in Advertising Design Gold Medal, Miles Arthur Graphic Commercial Art from Miami'sburg and a Bronze Medal to Anthony Jones Graphic Commercial Art, uh Miami'sburg. So they will be competing at state. That's all I've got, any questions or comments?
No, thanks, Joe. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll say, if you have any questions?
Be sympathetic to them, construction guys. We're, we're in a lot of positions like that with material and it's-
Oh, yeah.
It's rough, you know, it's-
No, no, there's no question about that. But again, we're trying to stay on, on schedule too, so uh I understand totally.
Well, Mister Corey, that brings us to you and the legislative update.
Uh I'm gonna give a update on House Bill one-twenty-six. It did not get a con- uh the House did not concur with the Senate amendments. The vote was zero to ninety, this bill will now go back to the Senate and probably have a conference committee formed. Um there's House Bill five-eighty-three that has had a second hearing in the House Primary Secondary Education Committee. If this bill was passed, it would uh require the state V O E to issue temporary short-term substitute teaching license to approved applicants. I think that would help with some of the sub-issues. Sounds, there was seven schools with uh testimony, all very interesting, all having similar problems. And then Governor Dewine signed Senate Bill nine that requires O D E and other agencies to reduce regulatory restrictions by thirty percent and also appropriates nine million dollars to assist local school boards with the May third primary, which might be messed up because our legislation cannot get the districting uh figured out, which is very upsetting. That's all I got.
Thanks, Corey. Next is our student uh achievement liaison, Mister Tim Lewis.
Well, um I wanted to announce the Building Student of the Month for February for each building. Um at Bauer Elementary, we have Harper Logan. Bear Elementary is Lilith Rains. Jane Chance Elementary is Carmen Morales. Kinder Elementary is Imogen Bolander. Mark Twain Elementary is Cavan Murphy. Medleyview Elementary, Branson Malot. Mound Elementary, Alex Powell. And Miami'sburg Middle School is Jackson Slamka. Also, um one other highlight uh last month, the um Chick Evans Scholarship is the nation's largest privately-funded scholarship program and it's valued at more than one-hundred-twenty-thousand dollars over a four-year period. Um basically known as the Evans Scholarship. It's a full four-year housing and tuition scholarship and it is awarded to golf caddies. Currently, there are one-thousand-seventy caddies enrolled in twenty-one universities under the Evans Scholarship and there's eleven-thousand-five-hundred caddies that have graduated as Evans Scholars. Miami'sburg High School Senior Logan McGuire has recently been awarden- awarded the Evans Scholarship. She started caddying in the summer of her freshman year when she was fifteen. Uh Logan will be attending Miami University in Oxford and plans to study political science with a minor in psychology. Her end goal is to become a lawyer. And also, her brother Cole was a recipient of this scholarship. Um Logan's father, Jason McGuire, is one of our employees in our maintenance department, so thought that needed to be recognized.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay. And I just realized something, Miss Neese. Everybody gets to talk. But you something. So you know what, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a recommendation next month that the district news and information be transferred over to you so you get to sharing some of the glory too. Is that all right with you?
Yeah, that's what we did with you.
You know what? Why wait? Let's go, let's go ahead and start it now. Do we need to vote on this? No, no vote. It's not on the agenda?
It's, it's all good, yeah. I've got it, yeah, the latest making a difference.
Hold on a minute, you're forgetting somebody.
Oh, wait, yeah, that's right.
Oh, I did, you know what, I'm coming back to you.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I did, I've, I completely forgot, sorry.
Okay, well, the latest Making a Difference honorees are Medleyview Elementary School Administrative Assistant Regina Wall and Board of Education Office Receptionist Amber Nicholas. Regina was nominated by Kelly Wall and Amber was nominated by Heather Wright. Their four nominations can be read on the district website, Miami'sburgcityschools.org. Both really, um the kind of ladies when you walk in a building, you feel so welcome, that's for sure. Winter sports update, girls' basketball tied for third in the G-Walk, fourteen to eight, fourteen to eight. And along, Player of the Year and all-time leading scorer. Boys' basketball finished eleven, twelve. Three out of four Southwest District teams still left are G-Walk. Wrestling, Cassia Zamet won her second O H S W C A state title and Simone Morton finished eighth. Boys finished fourth in G-Walk, sent eleven kids to districts. Fletcher Rose qualified for state. Gymnastics, district champions, twelfth at state meet. Molly, Molly and Madeline Winterman completed as individuals at state meet. I think Doctor Blessing went to that, right?
I did, yeah.
Cheerleading, game day, O A S S A state champions. Competition squad finished fourth at state championships. Swimming, Aiden Sizemore, Luke Gillespie, Tyler Pennington, Lucas Cloone and Anna Newkirk advanced to districts. Boys bowling qualified for districts as a team, finished ten to ten on the season. Girls bowling, Leanna Hartman qualified for districts.
Thanks, Ann. Now we go to Montgomery County Drug Free Coalition, Mister Dale Toadvine.
Thank you, sir. Um historically, uh the Coalition has uh had focused on um mainly educating uh students about um the harmful effects of heroin and the opiates and other illegal drugs. And um here recently, well, we continue to do that through the Coalition, but um there's been a huge um outcry by people who have re- had relapses after they went through treatment and stuff, they relapse. And um all the data started pointing to the fact that when they walk out of prison or jail or wherever they might be, they have nowhere to go. They have no money, they don't have, because they don't, you don't have a job. Uh it's, it, it's very difficult for um an addict, uh and when they're labeled that way, to um be trusted when they, when they come out of, out of uh recovery. And a lot of times when they relapse, um well, the back up for a minute, it, the, the statistics show that those that receive support somehow, that their success rate obviously is much, much better. So um now the Coalition has some partnerships that um we're, we're looking at when someone comes out that they, you know, they, they need to be able to get a place to live. They need to be able to get their license straightened up so that they, fines and stuff, so that they could get a license to drive to get to work. Once they get a, a um, a job, um they can, can continue to um grow in lots of other areas, there's good citizenship and stuff like that. There's mentors out there now that they've been assigned to through the Coalition. And uh it's, it's really, really becoming a broad-spectrum type of, I guess you would call a service that the Coalition is dealing with all these partnerships. So um the, I guess the focus now is uh becoming on uh working with the addict that is in recovery and try to make it something that they can actually do without having to, to go out and begin to s- to steal, just to be able to eat and things like that. Uh and it's working, it's re- it's really, really working, the program is working very well, so um. Uh that's good, I'm done.
Thanks, Dale. Uh now we'll go around the room and we'll start with Mister Daffler.
Not much, I'd like to hear that there's higher enrollment in uh C T C. I think that's a great uh, a great thing and Happy Saint Patty's Day.
Mister Toadvine?
Okay, um. I'd just like this to um point to all the accolades that our sports teams have had. Um, you know, our, our theater has put on um some spectacular um plays and stuff and they were going to be having another one soon, uh hopefully. And uh anyone that would like to make a donation, um Anne and I went to uh the mayor's meeting and uh the kids uh came with um their teacher and put on a couple of little uh segments of, of their past plays and stuff. And I tell you what, folks, we have some extremely talented young people in, in, in this area of theater, uh and music. I was thrilled to death, I mean, I mean, they sound professional. And, and some of them actually sounded very professional, uh wouldn't like high school kids. And if, so if you haven't had the chance to get to any of these things that they're putting on, and you remember the name of the play, it's Rock, Rockin' and Rockin'. Schoolhouse Rock. Schoolhouse Rock, yeah, thank you, I'll be able to remember that one. Schoolhouse Rock, that, that, that's coming and it's gonna be um. Uh it'll be put out there for the, the dates and everything when, when it counts. But yeah, I just encourage everybody to attend and just watch the talent that's there, it's fabulous.
Mister Lewis?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that preschool registration's still going on. If you're interested, please register your child soon. Registration ends on April eighth and, correct me if I'm wrong, full-day kindergarten registration until May eighth. Amy left, but I think it's May eighth? Yeah. That's it. Thanks, Miss Neese.
I just wanted to recognize our five social workers in our district. I was on Instagram the other day, I follow this, a social work site because my daughter's a social work, worker and um it said that sixty percent of our mental health uh professionals are the clinic, clinically-trained social workers. And um, you know, with the mental health crisis we have right now, they're just greatly appreciated. And I, I did talk to Brad Myers at the high school just to get a feel for some of the things that he does. Um he said he helps families and students with needed resources and referrals. He counsels all facets of mental health. He promotes student advocacy. He evaluates and assesses abuse. He refers students to outpatient mental health and administers suicide risk evaluation and referral as well as more. Most importantly and significantly, he said that he is present and consistent for students. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to the social workers in our district. I know Chris has done it before with Sally, Sally Royer.
Thanks, Ann, anything else?
Uh I only have two things, uh more or less for the principals. Uh I know there's only three of you. Um had a meeting today with chief and we're not done. Um as we come in, in October for fire prevention, that's probably not going to happen just in October now. I think we are gonna go to the month system where I'll get with you and you'll pick a month and then we'll come in maybe for a day or two that month instead of just October. However, Miss Thomas, uh we are going to extend the program not just through fifth grade, but we are gonna extend it through sixth grade now for a couple of different reasons. Um more or less in the juvenile fire center program and things. So I'll get with you and then we're gonna do the same thing, so um. Also, before I turn it over to Mister Espy, uh I will say that I was downtown, that I signed some stuff and I'm not gonna say who, but I will tell you that you had a glowing recommendation from uh your leadership. Um since you've arrived, uh the positive attitude, uh your willingness to explain things. Um they told me that it is um a joy to come to work and I just wanted to pass along that um, you know, anytime you come to work and especially in different positions as well as you three that are, you're the center of focus of our school district and, and people recognize. Um and as we have heard from things about Mister Homan and Doctor Blessing as well, uh you're no different and I just wanted to pass that along that, you know, it's- appreciated very much, so congratulations.
Thank you.
That's it?
Well, I was actually gonna um recognize the, the Treasures Office staff. They've um, I, I was looking at this analytic in my uh Google Calendar for last month and I had sixty-seven-point-nine hours of meetings um in the month of February and I thought that was, it seemed a little excessive when I saw the number, but I will tell you that there's absolutely no way that I could do um, you know, what I do and, and be able to help out, um, you know, help do my role without their aid and, and I just wanted to recognize um all the hard work of the Treasures Office staff. So thank you, Mister Amsler, for uh, for that as well.
I just wanna take the time to thank our community, our board, our hard-working teachers and staff and our students because I think we've uh had kind of turned the corner with COVID. Um you're not gonna be seeing a lot of weekly updates for COVID anymore. You aren't gonna be getting any um notifications from your child's school because we've kind of moved away um from that model. Uh the public health um authorities have given us permission to do so, so uh we're keeping our fingers crossed that it, we, we remain in our current course. Happy birthday to Mister Espy, his birthday is tomorrow. And um you can follow us on Facebook at Miami City Schools, it's our official Facebook page. We are trying to share a lot of information and exciting news um through that as well. And uh I wish everyone's favorite um NCAA basketball team the best of luck in the tournament. Happy Saint Patrick's Day.
Um not much, I know in April we have a work session coming up and so we have been working, um as I've um worked with Richanette and Michelle and Ravella, um we've been working on our capital plan, which we're putting together, so we're very excited to kind of present that. We've been working very hard over the months of putting things on the five-to-ten-year plan and where we're at and um, so that'll be coming up in April and give some input and see what your thoughts are as we look forward to that, so.
I will say, I saw the new, uh I guess you wanna call the window in the middle there. It looks very nice, a lot of light in there and it looks very good.
Yep, and we'll be putting together um also for that meeting, all the different projects that we've done um so far from um the summer to currently and then what's on the agenda for the summer and beyond, so.
Can I just say too, thanks Susan Woods for your presentation tonight?
Yes.
The, and the SEL people from E S C.
You all calmed me down. I was a little stressed beforehand.
He's been up his goods in that brain like crazy.
He was in the downstairs brain.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Maybe that we adjourn.
Second. Nineteen-thirty? Or seven-thirty, I mean? I do that all the time.
Who was the second?
Uh Mister Toadvine?
Yes.
No, he, he was, sorry.
Yeah, I was first.
I voiced.
Ann and I said at the same time. So whoever you wanna give it to?
No, I didn't, no, you said it second, I said third.
Roll call?
All right, Mister Daffler?
Yes.
Mister Toadvine?
Yes.
Mrs. Neese?
Yes.
Mister Lewis?
Yes.
Mister Amsler?
Yes.
Yes.